That's good. That's good. Okay. Okay.
Saying the address is invalid.
Okay.
The one from 1201, you said 1201.
Okay. Let's see. Can I borrow it?
We'll be able to hear it in our headphones?
Uh huh. Once we get it.
Mic check.
It's logged in.
Battery's at 100%. She connects to the meeting.
Of course, Mike would have it, it would be recorded there, right?
Yep. Yeah, we're gonna, we have it recording. Hmm. Why? Okay, Steve, I'm gonna get into your email here. And see. What is your problem? Why? Why?
And then George.
Okay, 232842180. That's the, oh.
He did not, not.
Yeah, that's to call in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But why won't it let you zoom in? Is it cranky with Zoom? Bring it down and. I'll do that on. Let's see, it doesn't have any there.
Have you downloaded, I mean. Shut down your system or did you just bring it up now?
Hey, Max? Uh, are you doing something right now? Can you try to get into the Zoom from your computer in there?
Yes.
And see what it's telling you, because it's telling them that they can't. It, it's very angry.
I don't know what to do. Download, I guess we didn't download, we didn't send it to George.
Send it to the listserv, so if it's. If George isn't, is George not on the listserv for some crazy reason?
He's not on the listserv.
Oh. We need to get you on the list.
And then some that's reported, Timmy.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. We will take care of that.
Yeah, so it's just his. Day Wondell, I mean G Wondell.
Hmm. Oh, wait. Is he on the internet?
I'm sorry?
Kind of seems like George isn't on the internet. Which would. That's just what I do on my. See on the internet? Not connected, not part of George's.
What's it saying?
Alright, connection Georgie.
Yeah, I think he's got it saved. I think it just wasn't connected.
You've got the wifi on.
I'm just gonna straight go to Zoom and see. Oh wait, no, that's the guy. Maybe it's a good.
Yeah, we have too many already.
So do you have the meeting ID?
Uh huh, I. I sent it out and then the listserv this morning. Yeah.
So did they confirm that we have anybody infected in town?
I haven't heard anything.
I heard Albert over at the auto place, he's not doing well.
Albert who? Our Albert?
Yes, that's you. Oh, did you tell him?
He's supposed to, they were straight swiping the check, he said he was open. He said he's had some.
Saying it's invalid? Why?
So, I mean, we'd have to go to Holy Cross to get tested.
What in the world? Why won't it?
Have our EMS.
I'm pretty sure I'm gonna check that today.
I don't know.
I don't know why it would be invalid if I scheduled it for today at 5:00.
Let's see. It might just.
This is the invitation I just copied.
Okay.
Let's put it there.
That's why we started early.
This is why we, this is exactly why we did this.
Extra early.
I said, but you want to come in and give on your iPad?
Yeah, I was told that you guys already knew about that plan, so. Okay.
I had it down, you had downloaded it.
Yeah, I think it was angry because it's an iPad. And they didn't want to automate it for download. Why is George not on the? But Max is just saying it's invalid too, so I don't know why.
So we can get a picture of this notification.
You're gonna stand back here behind your computer and shot and run out of here.
Um, he should be, he didn't say otherwise.
I wonder if it's okay, it's just.
Oh, I don't know. Ever. Colorado. How the game.
Especially if he's a carrier, they're not gonna get it.
Exactly, because I mean, there were three people in College Station that got it. They hit the screen in Colorado, so.
You have to. You're washing your hands and stuff, right? You should even, like, say you were.
That looks good.
That looks happy. Okay. Is it happy now?
Hello, sir, everybody? You?
You kidding me?
Where's the keypad? We like to set up the pickle? So while they're watching that, like, listening, you get this tennis match going on.
Perfect, that's what we need. I set up the, the waiting room, that way you could know that you're successfully logged in. So maybe it's just like, you can't log in 30 minutes ahead of time.
Well.
Steve, you're in that, right?
Yep.
So I will probably get out of here in like 2 years.
It's been a while, um, it's just. It's really only a couple of weeks, just for like.
I don't think it needs, because I think.
You hear the torches on?
I'll tell you. Well, so I thought we'd go out of here. We go back to Zoom, it's just like, yeah, yeah, so I can go back to Zoom.
Yep, it works, yep, you got it.
So are we gonna be?
They're gonna be in there.
So they'll be picking up my voice through here. Uh, they came up on microphones so that we shouldn't have to, we can hear, right? Because that's.
Yes.
Microphone's making too much, but if not, everyone's here. I'm ready now. No, we keep on.
We got it.
So in case we need to use microphones, I'm gonna tell us that, all right?
Perfect.
So I got two boxes. Can't look at her back and end the meeting and say.
Yeah, you can. I'm out of here. Just hit the. I'm gonna take a picture first, you wanna get a picture?
And then you can go back.
I'll split back and forth instead of.
You guys are getting set up?
I think so. You guys are awesome, this is great, and it's.
I got spray for. We didn't let them zoom in from here.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
They're not coming out, but.
Yeah, we're gonna go, I just, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Max? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm just trying to hit.
So I did a question.
Well, thank you.
It's, it should be up on the laptop there.
Let's see. Um.
Just choose a generic US one.
Okay. Well, I can actually.
Max, I got it. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go pull it up on my screen in my office, too, okay? Yep. Yeah, sure. That one isn't happy, okay? Um. For Houston? Okay. Three, four, six, two, eight. Calling. There it is, okay. Two, three, two, four, two.
Hi, I'm showing, well, one minute. One minute and counting.
All right. Got it, Joe?
I got the gun. Hear you and you're talking here. Okay. How big do you think my hands are, Todd?
Uh huh. Okay, so we have 13 people in the meeting?
Is that including us?
Uh, no, it does not include you. 13 people on Zoom right now, oh, yeah. I think so, yeah, go ahead. Is it still on the waiting room? I gotta.
All right, guys, can you look me at Smah?
My looks?
All right, Smah. All right, one more. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are you starting this?
Um, I just need to take us out of the waiting room here. And. Do you see it? I should just start, but it hasn't. Um. We all. Okay. Oh, here we go, okay. Yeah, we're good. Yeah, we're good.
So please join audio.
Okay.
What's the meeting ID?
So you got 10, the meeting ID? Meeting ID is 232842180.
Meeting ID number?
Yep. Okay. And can you see now? You're in, okay, cool, okay, we're good.
Do I need to turn on my background in?
Um, yeah, probably.
Ready? Let's call the meeting to order, roll call. Mayor Lyda Calhoun here, Councilor Steve Cherry.
Here.
Councilor George Wondell.
Here.
Councilor Dan Foley.
Here.
Councilor Sloane Covington.
Here.
Okay, you would stay and join me for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I, as a father, we just thank you for the stay, we thank you for our community. We ask a special blessing on our community during this period about the COVID-19 virus. We ask that you would be with our first responders, all of our town hall personnel, and our entire community. We ask your blessing as we go through this meeting, and we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance. Jesus' name, pray. Wait, did you just do that? And to the repugnance of wishes. Like, yes. I drink up. Individual. Welcome, welcome everyone that's here by Zoom, I want to thank the Congresswoman's staff for getting everything set up. Hopefully this one will work better than the one we did last week. Uh, we may be doing this for a few meetings. Uh, first item is approval of agenda, if I could have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
Roll call. Councilor Sloane Covington?
Yeah.
Councilor Dan Foley?
Yes.
Councilor Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Councilor George Wondell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes for my regular meeting, February 25th. Special meeting, March 10th, and emergency meeting, March 18th. I can have a motion for approval?
I can motion through the minutes for three meetings, regular one, February 25th, special meeting, March 10th, special on 13th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Councilor Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Councilor Sloane Covington?
Yes.
Councilor George Wondell?
Yes.
Councilor Dan Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is presentation and approval of our 2018-19 financial audit. I believe Cuiac and Associates is going to do the presentation for us. Daniel?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Someone?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, uh, hopefully I'll try to speak up and hopefully, uh. You guys are all able to hear me, um. Chair, mayor, councilors, uh, thank you for allowing me to be with you in spirit today. Um, to present your FY19 audit results, which is a requirement of the state audit rule. Uh, the state auditor says that we must present to a quorum of the governing body once the audit has been released by the state auditor's office. And, um, the audit has been published and is available on the state auditor's website in case, uh, any of the constituents want to see it there. Uh, our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards is to plan and perform an audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the numbers can be relied upon and they're properly classified and the note disclosures are accurate within the town's financial statements. Uh, this year was a little more challenging than prior years, and the reasons for that, obviously, because some turnover of finance staff as well as, um, the town required a single audit, which is a federal compliance audit. And that is triggered when any municipality or government or nonprofit spends over $750,000 of federal funding in a year. And so. We typically do the financial statement audit, but this one, in addition, was, uh, making sure that the town spent the money the way it was supposed to, all the federal dollars, and so we did do that, and I'll go over the results of that. Further down, um. There, there were a couple corrected misstatements, which would be, um, items that we identified that needed to be corrected in order to move on, get the numbers in, in, uh, conformance with general accepted accounting principles. We will go over those, because there was a finding that arose from that. And then, um, there were no other items that were identified as being incorrect that needed to be corrected and weren't correct, so there were no uncorrected misstatements. Uh, some of the significant accounting estimates for the town are the useful lives of capital assets, especially when there's more infrastructure going in, uh, over at the wastewater treatment plant and some, uh, the water, um, tank project. So it's always estimating what's the useful life of these capital assets and then depreciating those assets over what the estimated useful life is, so that's just, um, we say that to say it's a, it's an estimate, and actual result, results can differ. And then allowance for doubtful accounts, so that's for receivables, amounts owed to the town as of June 30th that were received subsequent to year end. And then the actuarial estimates for the town's, um, net pension liability, which that comes from the PRA and their actuaries, and then the town picks up their proportionate share of that liability, so that's an estimate. Significant financial statement disclosures would be the net pension liability that requires pages of note disclosures. And so we consider that to be a significant financial statement disclosure. Down, down to the meat and potatoes of what we're engaged to do is to give an opinion, so prior years, we just give an opinion on whether or not the numbers can be relied upon. Now, this year, we give an opinion on whether or not the numbers could be relied upon, and then moving beyond that is giving an opinion on whether or not the town is in compliance with the federal grants and the loan awards that you received. And so for the financial statements, the number aspect of it, the town received a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, so that's saying that a user of the financial statements can rely on the numbers, can rely on the note disclosures, can rely on accuracy and classification of those financial statements, so that's what you want. Congratulations, good job on, on getting that. And then moving beyond that to the compliance aspect, or what we call the single audit. And that's where we're testing major programs, um, which would be the largest grants that you guys have. Uh, the grant loans for the wastewater treatment plant and for the water tank that received a unmodified opinion, which is saying that the town is in compliance with all major compliance requirements or material compliance requirements for those specific grant loans. So that's what you're really going after as well, so congratulations to the town on that. Hard, um, to achieving those opinions, given that there was turnover and, um, we got through it and we got the audit submitted on time. So, there any questions on that before I move into the findings? Okey dokey, so the town did receive three findings, uh, the first of which is improper classification of transfers in and out. And so this has to do with, um, how the town's recording some of the monies and, and some of those are better classified in some funds, and I was gonna get together with Georgiana, uh, today, but we're gonna have to push it back, given the COVID-19 pandemic, to kind of go over how the best practices of, of recording some of this stuff. Um, being that, like, for example, the funding that is coming in for the wastewater treatment plant, that's really a business-type activity or enterprise fund activity. And so initially, it's recorded in some different, in different funds, like special revenue funds, when in reality, it should just flow directly into the enterprise funds, and Georgiana and I have talked about it a little bit, but I think we're gonna dive into it and go over it, and, and then she has, I think, some consultants at her disposal too, to make sure that that stuff's recorded correctly. Um, so that's what that finding results from, that is something that could be resolved in FY20. And so I'm here, uh, for Georgiana to discuss in further detail, um, at a later time, to make sure that they're able to get that correct. Then beyond that, there was a travel per DM finding, uh, advance approvals, approval of actuals, and then a cash appropriation in excess of cash balances. These are just audit, um, state audit rule items that we have to test that resulted in a finding. And so we disclose that as such, as we call them, other matters. And, um, all those findings are listed on pages 88 through 90, if you want to dive into those deeper, but that's where those, those findings can be found, and then there was no federal financial statement or federal single audit findings, so nothing regarding the expenditure of federal awards. And, uh, there was one finding resolved regarding internal controls over receipts and deposits, and we tested that in FY19, and that was resolved, so it's always good to resolve findings, and, you know, in some instances, there are findings that we identify that are just items that the town can approve upon. that are just items that the town can approve upon going forward. Are there any questions on any of that?
No.
Okay. So just to kind of finalize, we did finalize the audit. It was due to the state auditor's office on December 15th, which was a Sunday, so it fell on December 16th. We finalized and had an exit conference on December 13th and had delivered the audit to the state auditor's office on December 16th. So it was on time. We received the okay to print from the state auditor's office on January 27th and they released the audit on January 30th. Five days after that, five calendar days after that, it becomes public. So it's been public here for a while. And we did just complete our fourth year. And so we will be doing two more years after this before the state auditor requires rotation of auditors. Just big thank you to Georgiana and her, and her team. Big thank you to the town. It's been a pleasure of ours to work with you all and go up there and be able to see beautiful part of New Mexico. In fact, this year, we were up there during the cutting of the national tree. So couldn't have been better timing. We were able to see that happen. And that's something that I'll be able to tell my grandkids about because that was a big deal. It was really awesome to see. So just thank you for the opportunity and look forward to providing valuable service going forward.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, so I would take a motion at this point to approve the financial audit from 2018-19.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion or questions? Any roll call?
Counselor Dan Foley?
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Counselor George Wardle?
Yes.
Counselor Sloan Covington?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. The next item is financial report and approval of expenditures for February 2020.
So to date, we've expended 66.67% of the budget. GRTs that were received in March collected for January. Construction was down $3,679, 25.17%. Retail trade is up $789 or 0.9%. Real estate was down $13,856, 37.46%. Accommodation food service was up $7,596, 19.81%. Lodger's tax. For the month, we were up $969, 1.07%. Year-to-date, we're up $25,121 for 4.63%. And we had one lodge not report. Grocery seeds tax, for the month, we were down $28,811, 11.78%. Year-to-date, we're up $33,407 or 2.84%. That's my report.
Counselor, do you have any questions on the finances or on the expenditures? Or any questions at all for Dana? Okay.
I have a question on our tech social incorporated, the archiving social media. What is that about?
We, we archive all of the social media posts, messages, anything that comes in, so that if we were to have any kind of lawsuit or any kind of a request for information, we'd be able to pull it up. And that's done on all of our Facebook accounts.
Now, is that, so is that 4,788? Is that a annual charge? It's done by the volume of stuff that have to record or?
I don't know if there's a cap reporting, but it's the amount of Facebook page owners we have.
So we have the fire department, the police department, tourism, the town department, or the town page. And we archive everything that goes on, so we can go back and look at. Where am I getting feedback from?
It's, it's just the speakers.
Okay, okay. So, so any, anything that comes back. And we often get, have it set up so that it alerts us if there's profanity or anything like that that's going on on the page.
Okay. And then I have another question on Tanya Gonzalez.
That is the pharmacist.
Okay.
Hey, Georgiana, what is this U.S. Department of the Interior, the CHAMA project?
That is our water rights. We, we belong to the San Juan CHAMA. And so we release, they release some of our water rights and what the charge is for maintenance.
Gotcha, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I'll take a motion to approve financials. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Sloan Covington?
Yes.
Counselor Dan Foley?
Yes.
Counselor Steve Cherry?
Yes.
Counselor George Wardle?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move on to committee reports, public safety.
Public safety did not have a meeting, no quorum.
Public works.
Public works, we did have a meeting. Isaac reported.
We're starting to get, starting to work on the on the bottles. So you'll see sandbags on them right now, but as it dries up. You know, we'll start working on, on those and getting them filled properly. The new engine for trash truck has begun its journey. So it's going to take a month or two to get that put in. But we should have it back by the time we hit busy season, hopefully. Talked about possibly putting a compactor down at the Y, you know, near the gas station. We got approval to put it there because our guests that stay in the upper valley, you know, tend to bring a bunch of trash and fill those up first instead of coming to the center of town and using the compactor. So want to accommodate them and make that a little cleaner. I'm not sure if we're going to put a fence around it or, or not, but it'll look better than overflowing dumpsters. We got the slash pile burned, so that's good. And we're gonna, hopefully sometime in April, have the SCADA system installed so the guys can monitor the wells and take a lot of the day-to-day work out where they can monitor electronically. Russell reported on our projects. So the MAP funding, fiscal year 2020. The funding to do the road by Texas Res, we received one bid, Northern Mountain Constructors. They were awarded the project at the February council meeting and we're waiting on the remaining clearances to move forward. So that's going to happen. We want to get that done before Memorial Day. So that's the plan, hopefully. Phase two project bids opened on March 17th. I don't think we received no bids, correct? So we have to go back out for bids again, so. I'm glad I ran into Russell before this meeting. Our engineer is talking to two companies that will do the storage, storage tank rehabilitation. Wanted to go out to bid in March. I don't know if that's happened. It may not have. For the, I think it's still ongoing because they're trying to work out some details on the mixing system and other challenges with it. So we want to make sure we get the right company and we're giving them the right information before the bid. Sidewalk project, the legislature did not appropriate any funds for local government for transportation projects, which means we'll have to apply for construction funds next year for the sidewalks. And we'll continue with the design, so that's ready. So it's a ready project. Co-op funding, we're applying for $300,000. We're just, as much as we can, we're going to put that towards the High Street, repaving High Street. And also with the MAP funding, we're applying for $820,000. And again, that for High Street, so that, hoping we get some additional funds to maybe start that project. And we were adjourned.
Appropriation for the oil and tinder foot, the governor had signed that and now that they're talking about having a special session and maybe cutting more stuff out, is that, is that really going to work yet?
There's a tip. We had a meeting with the leaders across the state, talking about some of the repercussions might be. After the, if the oil and gas continues to fall like it is, anything can be addressed. Okay. Parks and Rec.
We didn't know everything.
Dan, do you want to give us a little update on the dog park?
Sure. The dog park, we're currently getting some bid together.
Together, we are. We're planning for this spring, hopefully the trees and stuff would get started and hopefully around Father's Day or something. See how that does. But we're looking at doing some landscaping. We're not going to do part of the east side so we can see how that ties in with the historical society. So we're going to work with them, trying to make sure their layout's going to be fine. But we're still on the books this year to try and get the shelter put up and then the rest of the picnic tables and that kind of stuff done. We'd like to see about putting in a little irrigation for the shrubbery and landscaping that's going to be done. We've looked at, we didn't have a quorum, but we did kind of just, some information was brought to us as far as regarding resurfacing the interior. What it would require is to take out about six inches of the dirt and then it comes back in with a moss-type material that will go in and it's better for the dogs, better for the environment and as far as that stuff. So we're looking at getting some pricing for that and hopefully have all that going. Wags and Wines is on schedule. We're looking for probably sometime in September is what we're hoping to do. And we'll be able to get the funds from that. And again, trying to get everything hopefully completed this year, maybe or by the end of next year, so we can add a couple of little features, you know, for the dogs to run and jump on and that kind of stuff. But the big thing, we want to get a water fountain put in and we're looking at an adult pup fountain joint, you know, where both of you can get a drink. Of the shade structure and then just getting the landscaping done. We're still hoping to coordinate with the town a little more on forest signage, what our branding is, so we can get that done because we'd like to get that in and put up this spring to summer also as well. But other than that, everything else is coming along well. So hopefully we'll have that all fixed up for us for this year, be done with the dog park and start moving towards some of our other projects, like Brandonburg and the stage and some of that stuff too, the playground equipment. And that's where we're at with that. Inside and out. Most of it's going to be on the inside. We're doing some edging, going to have some borders and stuff on it. We're planting a few trees. Again, the whole idea behind doing that is we don't want, we do want some shade for the, the dogs and stuff, but, and the people in there as well. But also, so it didn't look like it does right now, where we got the fence up, it just looks like a, you know, jail yard over there, so it's not very attractive. So the idea is to try and finish just getting that dressed up nice. So it ties in and goes along with the historical society and the library and all of that that's there. So it can be kind of interactive where people can be there, be over there. And again, we're going to be working with Tim and what they've got to do on some of his scheduling as far as when they're going. And then Russell had mentioned on the High Street road improvement. So we're hoping to be able to tie some of that in or we can work on the drainage and getting some gravel or something out front for the parking.
Yes, the concern I've heard is what kind of shrubs are going to go inside? And will they survive?
Yeah, that's already been, I'm, again, I'm not that much into the. Well, that can still be discussed. I mean, like I said, because we, we were right at the point now of just trying to design, to get ideas of, to, how much area we need so we know how much we need to spend on the shrubs, the trees and all of that. Because that's all going to have to get put in the ground here probably by the end of May, I would imagine, at the latest. So that's what we're working on. Again, we unfortunately weren't able to have a forum for a meeting, so we couldn't really get everything finalized to bring to the council. So hopefully we'll have that done this next month and we'll have, yeah. Because then we'll have enough information. We should have for the shade structure. We've gotten people volunteering, saying they'll be willing to put it up. Part of the group that came up last year that donated their services is wanting to come up. And again, that'll be a coordination of time to see if we'll be able to get them here to help forest planning and doing that. But other than that, we've had a couple of people said they would donate some of the chips and if they can be down to the right size. So that's, you know, like I said, going to look at that and maybe put until we know how long the street will be, possibly a little culvert or something to help control the drainage. So we can put some rock gravel up there for parking on the front. But yeah, no, it's going to be real nice when it gets finished, so we're excited.
We did have a meeting. First, the committee reports from the chamber. I did not receive the report from the chamber, but she basically went over the upcoming dates and events for the summer, which have not changed. From the ski area, they released all the dates for the rest of the season, which we know now is over. Summer dates and winter dates for next year have been picked. Quickly from the tourism department, we've got Sybil who joined full-time. And also just side note, Sybil helped a lot with, I think, getting all of this working digitally tonight. So thanks to Sybil and the entire tourism office. We've got, at the time, we had 10 applicants for the RFP for marketing. And we've got a committee that will go over those applications and bring them to council. Special events RFP, special event funding has started. Working on the vacation guide. 7505 is working on the regular target markets for the upcoming events for the summer. Had some news showings, or some news appearances in Albuquerque for spring and try and keep doing more of those as we get closer to summer. And Steve Stucker on memorial is coming up and then just memorial planning in full swing. You know, obviously, who knows how that looks at this point, but as of the time of our meeting, they were in full swing for that. There's a full report from Sunny five oh five on what has happened in advertising for winter and what is coming up for spring and summer. We did have a report on the Golden Eagle housing. At the time of the report, we are eighty percent occupied. The town did give end of employment notices effective May first to Marla and Bill. And the plan is to have just one maintenance non-call person living on site. Job has been posted. Applications are, were due last week. April fifteenth, sorry, not May fifteenth. So there's, we know that occupancy will go down now. Being off season and then internationals moving out. We've got a new housekeeping company that's working well. Internet changes, linen sale. So there's some things going there. Trying to, considering rebranding and renaming. So bring any suggestions to town hall. And then still working on some future plans to bid up contractor work for the back four efficiencies, a group room and the manager's unit for Elk Ridge. And working on the capital expenditure reserve fund once the expenses are more consistent and one full year of town ownership. And then we adjourned.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is mayor's report. I just want to give a little update. All right, is that better? The stay at home order went into effect this morning at eight o'clock. All businesses are closed except for essential businesses. Hotels are still at a fifty percent occupancy. Just so you guys are aware, we are not encouraging tourism at this point. We are encouraging our guests to stay home. They need to stay home where they can be safe, in their own environment and where they can keep us safe. Our, our services are already maxed and we're working on a bit of a skeleton crew. We don't have a lot of EMS personnel. Our fire department is small. Our police department is pretty small right now. So anything that happens up here, if they were to contract the virus, it would really put us at a disadvantage. We need to remember it is off season. Typically, this is the time of year when we are busy doing our spring cleaning, getting our stores cleaned and ready for the upcoming season. So I know it's, I know it's a hardship and we're doing everything we can through the visitor center to get out the information so that people know what is going to be available as far as economic help. We, this is an economic disaster. The state recognizes that. The federal government recognizes that. I think they're being very aggressive as, as far as making programs available to us. You know, of course, we won't know until we have applied for those programs and see what is actually available to us. But I'm optimistic. We're hoping that there's going to be some programs available for state government, state and local government. We're already seeing that our GRT is going to probably take a hit because of March. And not knowing what's going to happen in May and June, we're probably going to be looking at a flat budget at best. And we're doing everything in our power to not have to cut resources or cut services. Some of the things that the town is doing, we have a blood drive scheduled for April first. That's a critical need within the state and across the entire country. So look for emails for that. United Blood Services will be bringing their bus up here. So that should be a safe environment for everybody to donate blood. We've sent out surveys to try and identify the people in town that have needs and the people that could help fill those needs. So we're trying to do everything we can to watch out for our people, which is just another reason that we need to focus on our local people and let the other communities focus on their people by keeping them at home. We are still looking at what we're going to do with advertising. The tourism department is looking at some co-op grants. We have a couple of big ones left. One is for some digital advertising that's supposed to go out from May through July. I know that April had a conversation with someone at the tourism department today. And I'm not real sure what's decided on that, but we're, we're trying to just gauge where that advertising needs to go out. And we're focused more on brand advertising, keeping Red River top of mind. So that when this pandemic ends and we begin to go back to normal, people will know that we're still the closest mountains to get to and we're still affordable. And we're just banking on the fact that people are going to be very eager to get out and travel and get back to normal. And gas prices are going to be low. It's going to be very affordable to travel. So hopefully, this, this is going to be short-lived. We all recognize how tough it is, but I think we just have to hang together and support each other, knowing that we will get through this because it's what we do. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to call. We do have the town hall staff. We have the doors closed, so you can't get in. But if you need something, you should be able to communicate by phone. We have the town website, the redriver, redriver nm.gov almost ready to go, where people will be able to make their payments online. So they won't have to come in there. They should be able to do lodgers tax, pay their water bill, download any forms that they need. So visitor center is working on a skeleton crew, but they're coming in. So we're trying to make it as, as accommodating as we can for all of our citizens so that they don't feel, we, we don't want panic. We want everybody to feel like it's business as usual. We're here to help. So anything that people need, please don't hesitate to call. Any questions on that? Okay, next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. First item is a conditional use permit for Red River stables. Is Dirk on with us or, or Chapel?
I'm here, Chapel's here, but Dirk, yeah.
Okay, Chapel?
I'm here. Are you there?
We can hear you.
Okay, Dirk and Kathy couldn't join, but they, Planning and Zoning is recommending approval for a conditional use permit for the stables. And it's been approved in the past, but this year, the Planning and Zoning wanted to revisit it just to reinforce how frequently the stables needed to pick up horse fecal matter along High Street. So one of the conditions set forth was that it needs to be picked up twice a day. So Kathy Neal was present at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to say that they will do that. But, and we've approved it for a year. So, and we're trying to time it with their business registration application every year. So we can do that all at once.
Do I have a motion to accept PZ's recommendation to approve the conditional use? Second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Councilor Steve Cherry. Councilor Sloane Covington.
Yes.
Councilor George Wondell. Councilor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is the special exception sign permit for the Moots family. This is a real estate sign down on the pasture at the east end of town.
Yes, so Planning and Zoning recommends this for approval. As you all are aware, the sign ordinance specifies real estate signs can't be more than six square feet in size. And, but given that this is a nineteen acre commercial property, they, the Planning and Zoning recommends it for approval, given the size of the property. And, but we are bringing this now because we received a couple of inquiries regarding this size. But Planning and Zoning believes that the size is warranted, given the size of the property.
Do I have a motion to accept PZ's recommendation on the special exception sign?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, questions or discussion?
It's been existing at that size.
They have never gotten approval for it. It's always been there for years. Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Councilor George Wondell. Councilor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Councilor Sloane Covington.
Yes.
Councilor Steve Cherry.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next one is a special exception sign permit for the lift house.
Um, yeah, so the gorilla, the lift house is, has applied for a special exception sign permit. It is going to go on the east side of the building, I believe, in your packet. You have multiple different visuals and lots of information regarding the sign. The total square footage of the sign is a hundred and nine square feet. And you kind of maybe think that's a lot, but the Planning and Zoning was recommending this for approval because they, each building can have a main sign of fifty square feet. And then they can have a second additional sign up to fifty square feet, depending, it's measured by linear frontage of the building or the lot, whichever is smaller, up to fifty square feet. So they meet that requirement. So all in all, they would like to essentially combine the fifty square feet requirement or is fifty square feet main sign allotment with the fifty square feet additional sign allotment, combine those into one. And then add an additional ten square feet on top of that. And it's a great looking sign. It's going to be metal. And Reed and Lynn, I believe, are on, in case you have any more questions about the design. But it's a, it'll be lit, not backlit. The lights will be facing toward the building and the light, and the awning goes over the sign as well. So there, it won't be in violation in the night sky ordinance or anything like that. But Reed just chatted and said that they are both on, if you guys do have any, if you guys do have additional questions. But essentially Planning and Zoning is recommending it for approval. And I have the sign ordinance pulled up if I need to read off any specific language, if you guys have any questions.
So Chapel, go ahead, Dan.
I've got a quick news. The sign is going to be made like the same material that the lift house itself sign is. Like on the other side of the building?
Or it says lift house.
Same material?
I believe that's correct. Is the chapel, it's the same metal?
Reed, do you want to, it is metal. I think both are, but it's a different design.
Yeah, so it'll be the same brushed metal as the lift house letters on the front of the building now.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
And I guess my question would be how, how much square footage is in the lift house sign?
The current lift house sign, which is on the front of the building, was put on the building by Red River Scary Inc. And it is twenty seven point seven seven square feet. And that is to brand the building.
So Linda, given that it's, it's a corner lot, so on one, you can have a main sign, like if it was, say it was not a corner lot, you could have a main sign up to fifty square feet. And then additional sign or signs up to fifty square feet. Given that it's a corner lot, they also get additional square footage up to half a square foot of signage per linear frontage. So if you look at Google Maps or Google Earth, if you calculate it, it's roughly between a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five square feet that they're allowed for the building.
Okay, so why don't I ask for a motion to approve PZ's recommendation and then we can have further discussion? So if I could have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, any other questions or discussion on this?
I just am curious if, if they're pretty much maxing out, it seems like what, what's usable for the building? If, if they're going to be adding or wanting in the future to add any other signs for the Boot Guru or the Ultimate Clinic or the, you know, the Lift House Guest Services Office in that building. Are they maxed out there or is there still room for more? How does that work? You know, and like, kind of in relation like the Miners Mall building, I know they have one sign for, that has all the individual businesses signage on there. So do they, do they still have room to add more signs after this or is this it?
So that's a good point. And that's something that PZ did ask the Boot Guru. Their signs are inside the window, if you've noticed, their poster boards are. And that, so that does not count toward the total allocation of the sign permit or the sign for the building, signs for the building. Given that the ski area or, and/or associated individuals of the ski area do own that building, they have the ability to restrict the, or was, restricted isn't the right word. They have the ability to determine the amount of signage for other businesses that are their tenants in the building.
Okay, so if the Boot Guru wanted to put a sign outside, would PZ recommend approval for that?
That I don't know. I think though, our first line of defense would be to contact the landlord, which is the ski area and/or associated individuals. They said that they would handle that on their end if another business wanted to put up a sign.
They've used their lot for footage. They probably shouldn't be allowed to put anymore. And you also do, there is a sign for Ultimate on the other side, hasn't it?
I'm not sure. Chapel, is, is there a sign for Ultimate on the other side?
Is there a sign what? Sorry.
For Ultimate?
There is a sign. And Reed, do you happen to have, know that square footage? Reed or Lynn?
No, we don't know what the ultimate sign is. They are seasonal as well currently. And Justin Whitlock just as well pointed out in the chat that we had discussed this at Planning and Zoning with everyone present. And there should be roughly thirty-five square feet, give or take, to work with for other businesses.
And so we plan on limiting the other businesses to what our leftovers are.
Okay, gotcha. But they, but they still would have to come to PZ for, or would have to go to PZ for approval. Even if you guys approved it, it would still have to go to PZ.
Correct. That would, I mean, we would loop in, we'd ask Lynn and Reed or any other applicable individuals to be there as well since they're the landlord, in case we had further questions.
Okay, just for the record, it's a very attractive sign. So, okay, any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion to accept PZ's recommendation. So let's you roll call.
Councilor Dan Foley.
Yes.
Councilor George Wondell. Councilor Sloane Covington.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next, we'll move on to new business. And we have no new business. So at this point, if there's any public comment, I would take public comment.
Hey Linda, I have one question.
Okay.
Have, have we thought about limiting or rotating any of the town hall or Public Works or any other of our staff to keep either a smaller group on hand or allow people to work from home if, if necessary? Or I mean, if possible, or just to rotate people in and out, just to kind of, you know, lessen the exposure that, that we're put, that all of our town employees are getting?
We've talked about that and Georgiana and I talk about it on a regular basis and we're sort of monitoring the situation. With Public Works, what we're advising them to do is any projects that can be done that doesn't require more than a couple of them working on. With Public Works, what we're advising them to do is any projects that can be done that doesn't require, um, more than a couple of them working on it than to continue with it. We're wanting them to focus on vehicle maintenance, um, oil changes, all the things that they never have time to get done because they're always so busy with other projects. Uh, we're going to have them look at doing the street sweeping, um, and preparing for Memorial Weekend. So that's, that's kind of the direction we're going with them. We feel like there's enough projects that can be taken care of. If it gets to the point that we feel like it's not, um, healthy for them to be coming, then we'll certainly assess it then. As far as in the administrative office, um, Georgiana's there every day. And then right now we're having, we're having a full staff. So we're kind of leaving it up to them. If they can work at home, we will make that available to them if they don't, if they've been exposed or they don't feel safe to come in. But, but of course their, their safety and their wellbeing is definitely top of mind. At the visitor center, um, April is coming in and checking and we're having one person staff that. We're open Monday through Friday. We do have the bathrooms closed because they were being abused. Uh, motor vehicle is open for, um, vehicle transactions only. And the library is closed. So that's kind of how we're operating right now, but we're certainly, what did I miss? Oh, and the trolley is running on limited hours. So, um, again, we're sort of taking it day by day and just sort of monitoring the situation. But we do consider, uh, town government to be essential, as does the state. So we're just trying to keep everything going as normal as we can.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Appreciate your work.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, being none, we will be adjourned. Thank you, guys.